Well, I guess we can call us to order if they're both ready.
Yes.
Um, I'll also try to find it. Can you give us the only city agenda?
Not in my mind.
Okay, we're gonna start with the comments from the attendees. So anybody wanna talk at us? It's a good time.
Yeah, I just wanna make sure my phones are.
I have a question.
What?
Uh, when you, when you spoke to the sound consultant that the attorney recommended, did you ask the consultant why they wanted to change the testing at wind speeds at 15 miles per hour, reduced from 30 miles per hour?
Uh, I did not ask him that.
What was the reason for lowering the, the testing wind speed?
Do you know what point you're talking about or what, what comment?
In the law? It'll take me a minute to find it.
It's 2.8, 2.7.
I got it in Hopkinton law, and the Hopkinton law's on page 25. You don't have the Hopkinton law on the table.
Oh, there's any.
Okay, uh, page 17.
Uh, page 17, that's right.
Uh, B.
Page 17.
Under B?
Yeah.
There was a change from 30 miles per hour on the testing to 15. And my, my concern is that the turbines just about start generating electricity at 15 miles an hour when the speed, when the wind speed is 15. And as the wind speed increases, the generation increases, which means the noise increases. So you changed the wind speed from 30 down to 15 when the general, it's going to be generating electricity at 30 miles an hour. In other words, the blades aren't gonna be spinning at only 15 miles an hour. And the wind speed is directly correlated to the generation of the electricity, which is correlated to the noise generated. But you're allowing the company to test at 15 miles an hour.
Yeah, I guess that's what he said, isn't it?
But I, I wanna know why. What, what is the rationale?
Anybody can answer that?
Well, we've got a two-page printout about it. Here it is.
2.07 C.
It might be, you see, I don't know if I got it in there.
Actually, this is what they intend to do. Oh, that's okay. But that's, yeah, but I mean, if that's what they intend to do, then they should, okay, then you know.
Yeah, the wind speed, the thing explains that the wind speed, as the wind picks up, it just, the, the noise is directly, uh, correlated to the electricity output. And so when you've got more wind, you've got more electricity output.
Yeah. Um, it, this, uh, this document here, this particular bid, um, who did this? Who's got the red?
That, the red, okay, so the gray, you know, is, is McCowen.
Yeah, Mr. Cowan.
And the red is Rick James.
And that, this-
And there's two separate things, um-
And this, this chart right here came from New York State. This came from, uh, Nisartha.
Mm-hmm.
And the cut-in speed is, this is deceiving because it's, it's, uh, the, the speed is not done in miles per hour. It's done in seconds per minute. So you're thinking that it's 15 miles per hour, but in fact, right here, it's 30. This is 30 miles an hour. So it's deceiving. But the cut-in speed is, 15 is about here. It's still in that cut-in, uh, curve. And then they cut off at 56 miles an hour, right here is where they have to cut off to the emergency. But the, the nameplate generating is in the 30 to 36 mile an hour. So why would you test at 15 when you're just coming off the cut-in speed? But Cowen is recommending that you test at 15, and I wanna know why.
Well, maybe we should, we threw that question to him. That'd be, uh-
And then make the appropriate change.
Okay, we're gonna refer. But, um-
Yeah.
Is there any, anything else you can put on top?
Yes.
Back there.
Hi, compile your rant again. Uh, one thing I wanna say, I'd like you guys to take into consideration when voting for the project, for this project, the much-needed potential revenue that will bring into our two communities, both Hopkinton and Parrishville. And I wish that you would, uh, when you vote, that you would adopt the resident and property setback under the current town's current local law. I also don't understand why a school budget was passed, increases our taxes to 3 percent, but yet everybody needs to turn around and vote against a $38 million project that will bring money into the district, will help relieve some of the strain on the school and the town. But just remember, try to keep the local law like it is, please.
Go ahead.
I just wanted to make the comment. The money is not coming from the company. It's coming directly from mandates, from an SBC fee that you're paying in your electric bill. We pay the company, the company gives the money back to us. I just wanted to make that point clear.
It's our money.
I have two items to give you. One of them is a letter that explains several different acoustic fellow engineers who recommend DBA to be lower than 35, somewhere between 32 to 35, and a few other pieces of information about that. And the second one, before I talk about, but that's the question. The stationary unmanned, uh, noise monitoring, whose idea was it to put, or whose recommendation was it to put that in the law?
Let's see if that was in our old law.
I don't think so, 'cause it showed up in a, in a different colored ink.
Okay.
It's 2.8. I'm sorry, 2.2, 2.08.
Oh, yeah, okay.
It kinda showed up around the same time that the possible change of hunting cabin did, which I, I could be wrong, but I was told that came from Ibradola's lawyer. So I'm just curious whether this particular thing came from Ibradola's lawyer.
All right, I think we took that word from where, from, uh, kind of Hopkinton's back in March.
Okay. And they couldn't tell me where it came from either.
They could tell, if you go from Hopkinton.
Yeah, but we're trying to figure out where it came from.
This is why. Uh, the 2.07 states that the sound standard would be from the nearest nonparticipating property line, but you have no guidelines to measure that, other than it states that it would, that a measurement should be taken every 10 minutes. For example, who takes the measurement, who does the hiring for that person, who pays for it, how far above the ground is the measurement taken, other general provisions for that measurement, wood instruments. Other towns have, have listed in their laws that the town does the hiring, but the person who is doing the measurement has to list the manufacturer, the model, all specs of the equipment that are being used, or that is being used. Without these guidelines, you're leaving the town with no control. You're giving the developer all the control. Uh, so there's no, no provisions for getting the ambient noise, uh, in different places of the town within the law, the way it's written right now. And then under the, the section with the monetary noise monitoring station, that whole thing, in my opinion, from what I have read from other acoustical engineers, that that is a very flawed system to try to monitor, uh, what's going on. To be accurate, they need to be manned. Um, this law proposes two stations, so if there's two stations within the town, how does the property way over here be monitored if the station's over here? So without having a, a monitoring station at every single property line, there's no way to know if the turbine closest to Person X's property line is, is above, or, you know, meeting the standard, or is above the standard, opposed to ones, ones near that monitoring station. And 2, 2.02B, B2, allows the developer to choose the consultant. This again takes all control away from the town. The town should hire the consultant, and the developer should pay for it. This is written that way in several other towns' laws. 2, uh, 2.08B3, the developer dictates and gives the description of the equipment. Uh, the town, again, needs to, to maintain control. This, it states that it's going to a website, which means there's software being used. So what is the software? Has it ever been used before? Has it been tested for, for independency or for accuracy? And 2.08A, it's, um, in Hopkinton, it says authorized users, and your law, it's the Parrishville one, it says website visitors would have access, but it doesn't state who those website visitors are. So in other words, the way it's written right now, the company could have complete control of that and not share it. It would just have to take their word for it. So, you know, who is the, the website visitors? Um, so if there doesn't state it, state it who it is, and it gives the town that, why not make it public? Um, 'cause if it's not, not public, you can take it for the word, and if it's not, if, why not make it public? Are they trying to hide something with, with recommending it to be this way? So if there's no real-time noise data being collected at each property line, and for the nonparticipating property line, then the burden of proof that a turbine is over the standard shifts to the property owner, which is not protecting the town and is not, not right. So, and lastly, at least in this section, I did not see any, anywhere where there is a consequence if this monitoring system shows that some turbines are over the, the standard. It's a monitoring system, it doesn't enforce any consequence. It's just saying it's monitoring it. Kinda like you're walking to a hall, a monitor, not, not an actual law enforcer.
I believe the intent of that thread, um, in section 208, when it states that it's gonna be able to be monitored by any, uh, by various people, that's so that it's open to the public, right?
Yeah, and-
But with-
And you also think-
I would hope so, but without it stating that, a developer could say, no.
And section 208B6, it actually states that, um, the establishment of an estro fund or identification of a distant fund through which the cost of review on behalf of the town by its own consultants, attorneys, and other related costs to the town shall be managed.
Right, but what happens if they're form, they're to be over, like, for example, in Oregon, there is a, a, um, development that does have off-site monitoring. But that, that particular, uh, project has five residences within the entire project. Three of them are, are, people, people are in, so they're monitored at each of those three, uh, properties. And the, the system works when, where it goes back to, um, to somewhere manning a computer, that if it's found to be over, then even, then within 30 minutes, the 10 turbines closest to the station that is showing the sound is over, is immediately shut down. And keep in mind that, as far as I know, Oregon has 35 DBA statewide, and Oregon is also where Ibradola's corporate headquarters are.
I thought that we, um, we do allow the town for, to hire a consultant, and we take, we, we, we're-
Right. But that would, the same, the way it's worded here, that doesn't mean that that's the consultant doing these measurements. The way it's worded here, it's the developer is hiring a consultant to do the-
That's not the way it is.
I was saying the developer is responsible for the cost the town incurs for hiring a consultant.
Yeah, that doesn't sound like, we're using their consultant. It's some consultant, is the town board's come, some, some consultant.
Yeah, under, um, 2, 2B, that, so they, on their proposal, need to list the name, contact information, credentials of a consultant. So they're, so the way it's worded there, they're hiring the consultant.
Well, you could definitely say this is information they just gave it to us, and if there's no way we can answer this at any point in time.
Oh, I, I understand that.
Okay? Anybody else got anything, anybody?
I have that question about the ambient noise. So in the two towns, we're talking about the ambient noise that we have in comparison as a baseline, they're, they're gonna go over it, and when they do, there are penalties. But how do we find out what each of us individually have as our independent baseline ambient noise? Because mine is really, really quiet, and that's why my property is where it is, it's a problem. And I can hear the trees and the crickets. So I don't want my ambient noise to be changed to match the difference of someone who lives in a northern area, and you know, the road, or whatever. Have you figured out how you're going to make sure nonparticipating members aren't losing, you know, you said that, because there's like a 3% change that's gonna blow out or something in the VBA. How do you know that the nonparticipating members' ambient noise is gonna be respected?
I've never anything from anybody's part that suggests that issue, and you have any guess? Anybody? Has anybody seen anything?
Hammond, what else? We need to, uh, we need to ask the town to do ambient noise testing in locations at people's request.
Mm-hmm.
They had, I saw that the developer had a movable, uh, noise tester, that they were moving around from property to property, and next to the snow machine trail.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and that would be an option if the city, if the, if the town could get us some, uh, baseline levels that helps us know more what would be exceedance. Because New York State has, um, you, you get your ambient level, and, uh, they're not allowed to go over six decibels over that. So I think that's really important, that we find out that ambient noise level. In addition, um, under ambient noise level here on page four, under section 1.05, Mr. James has, uh, Mr. Cowan made, uh, made a suggestion that, um, leave this out of the definition and defer the noise descriptor designation to the developer's consultant. I think that would be him. And we can determine whether or not it's appropriate for each case. And I think that's a little, um, whatever. And so right above that, Mr. James has added, uh, Cowen's suggestion is bizarre, the definition is essential to keeping the developer from tricking the test. All regs have this language, it is not confusing. Cowen wants to let the developers control the test, so they are never out of compliance. So there's another reason why the town needs to bring in some ambient testing.
And a quick note on Mr. Cowen. So I did, I've been doing research on sound, like we all have, and his studies were so weak and lame, it was kinda like a sixth grader wrote them, to write up. There are some studies out there that are 100 pages long, I know, 'cause I've been sifting through, 300 pages. His is like five or six pages, it's got big letters and weak charts. I feel like he is more like a, an advertisement for, for a sound specialist. He's not someone that we should necessarily trust, I don't think he has a full grasp on, um, what this affects, like the degree of which his information, how it's being disseminated like it's the word of God. I, it's crazy. He, he compared to other studies, it's really weak. I think that somebody should check out the differences between his studies and other studies.
And, uh, if you look at this document in your file, do you have that in there?
Yeah, that's from, uh, Mr. Cowan.
Cowan, yep. And it's got a few pages, one of which is the sound pressure levels. And if you look at that chart, um, he has, as the measurement, 20 is the rural area at night. Um, at most, others have it a little bit higher, the other acoustic fellows. And he says, uh, a five-decibel increase or decrease is clearly noticeable, a 10-decibel decrease is half as loud, a 10-decibel increase is twice as loud. So if you go from 20, which is what he says rural area at night, up to 40, which is the Hopkinton definition right now, you're, from 20 to 30 is twice as loud, and from 30 to 40 would make it four times as loud.
I mean, that's-
It's logarithmic, not linear. Right.
Some of us would like to sleep at night. We get kinda ornery, you know, we don't get sleep, you can ask my husband. And, um, you know, I can understand if the neighbor has a one-time thing when he's got a feller-buncher for a couple hours, and he starts it up at 5:30 in the morning. And I got used to it when he started up at 5, 5:30 in the morning, his, his crusher. But he was here first, and that's it. We are here first this time, and we get to set the rules, no matter what they say.
Go ahead, Gary.
Fred, I'd like to make a couple of points, and one clarification. On the setbacks, I wanna make sure that in your law, I mean, they haven't defined it as such, but state land is property that's nonparticipated, correct? So setbacks are from the state land to, or-
That's the way I would interpret it, yes.
Good, thanks. I don't know if that needs to be spelled out, but that question has arisen. I just wanna make sure that that's pretty clear. That's next.
Interpretation, or, when he comes in, interpretation, or attorneys, or what, right?
Over in Hopkinton, it became very apparent after the letter was read from Chata Gay about the problems they're having with Wind Company, telling the town that the wind law supersedes the town law. And they're gonna go to court with it, I guess. This is all about sound. So in order to protect the town of Hopkinton, and I hope in the town of Parrishville, we think you need to add a statement that says this, this law supersedes all commercial, industrial, and private agreements affecting any aspect of this law. That's gonna protect you from this kind of conflict, and that was going into your general section in the very front of your document. I'll read it again. This law supersedes all commercial, industrial, and private agreements affecting any aspect of this law.
You, you, Rick, you spell it out, rather than me write it down, I'll just-
Okay, this law-
No, no, I'm gonna ask you to write it in. He's a-
Hand it to you.
Okay, okay, that's it.
And the purpose really is necessary to prevent unrecorded agreements, including Burton-Bat studies, good neighbor agreements, and that are made with the developer for qualifying as participating man owners. So we strongly urge you to put that in the introduction to your law, so that it protects. I won't read the letter regarding the Chata Gay thing, but trust me, there's a large contingent of people now that are very upset with the noise. The town is asking the company to retest, the company says, uh-uh, they're not going to, and it probably gonna win the lawsuit. And I wanna prevent that from happening here. Thanks.
You're gonna hand it to me, right, Gary? Okay.
Yeah, I just, I just, I don't know how you arrived at the, um, experts that the town hired, I guess it was true, Maluski. But what, the thing is, just, if there had been some background checks, I mean, he, Maluski, and Cowan, and Ibradola go way back to hard travel, where there's a 60-person lawsuit that still has not been resolved to this day, and we're talking years ago, 2012. So now they're bigger, they're louder, and the thing, I said today, it seems like we're a bunch of lemmings following each other over the cliff, because nobody seems to be learning from the first one diving over, that the outcome is going to continue to be the same. And I don't know how he can contradict himself, he's never even been here to do any ambient sort, sound levels, and I'm sorry, but I would not trust the, the sound studies that were done before, because that was, it's all strategically done to make it seem like it's louder than what it is. And, and we all know the game, right? We're, we're getting to be experts of the game. So, to me, for him to say 40 or 45 is fine at night, when he's never even taken the ambient sound at night, is very distressing. And that everybody is like all on board, stamping it with their approval, and yet, in other documents that he's written, he says 20. So why is that okay to subject us to four times what we're normally accustomed to at night? Where is that okay?
And we have to protect ourselves now. We can't leave it up to litigation, we can't leave it up to, we'll go fight it at the time.
20.
We've gotta protect ourselves ahead of time, and make it as strict as possible. If we can make changes when it needs to, we're in control. I mean, Ibradola, they are selling, they are suing co, uh, different towns because of Burton-Bat studies. They're trying to suppress the information, well, they've already done it, to suppress the information, the kills that happen after. I mean, they are dirty. Go online. There are hundreds of articles talking about litigation against this company. State of California is suing them. I mean, for market manipulation, they have, the World Bank has given them, uh, a year where they cannot deal with the World Bank as a penalty for the market manipulation and fraud, and this lawsuit's around town, that means on the internet, it's easily accessible. I spent days, I did a write-up, I've sent it to Kathleen Burgess, you know, like, it's there, it's easy. Why should we trust them with our town? We're little people, I don't have the money to sue them.
I've come down a minute.
I can't come down.
This law hasn't, hasn't, this law hasn't written for, for Ibradola, right?
I know, but what you just said, it's frustrating, you said it leaves enough litigation or to do-
As far as the town of Parrishville, Ibradola could walk away tomorrow, and somebody else could come in, right?
Right.
I mean, we, we gotta have a law that doesn't, doesn't, you know, isolate one particular company over another.
Absolutely.
So the reputation of the company, you know, that's not, that's not anything you gotta take into consideration.
But the reputation of the experts should be taken into consideration. And their, and their relationship.
Now, I'm not gonna spend, Mr. Maluski, I don't know, uh, but I did not, I could not find where he had been involved in any wind situation for a wind company in the past. But you have something?
His name is right in some articles that are written about hard travel. When he came into that whole thing, I don't know, but he is involved in it, and so it's probably. And that's what worries us.
Okay.
It's not, you know, I mean, we want unbiased information that's going to protect us in the long run, because we're the ones that live here.
Anybody else?
Fred, please. Going back to Frank P. Zong, Hopkinton. Going back to Frank Wilton's, Hopkinton. Going back to your sound. Now, how did you arrive at 35 dB? The, we had a dB meter on Hill Street last night.
Yes.
The dam was 52 dB, constant.
Yeah.
The furthest limit of the soccer field is three tenths of a mile from the dam.
Now, which side, are you in Pierceville?
School.
Okay.
So the school is within three tenths of a mile of something generating noise at 52 dB. That seems to be acceptable for everybody here. But yet, when you're getting at the wind noise from turbines at 1,800 feet, you're saying 45 dB is proposed is too much. I measured my speaking voice. I bear between 65 and 72 dB. You put me 1,800 feet away from your house. You go in the house, and at six football fields, are you going to hear me? So how did you arrive at the science of 35 dB? That's the question.
We got quite a bit of information, and you were overwhelmed with stuff from both sides. I mean, going back to last summer, we got hundreds of documents.
I mean, the kids, the kids are exposed to this 180 days out of the year. They're exposed to it in their school buses. They're exposed to sounds when they're taking to sports venues, over 100 dB for hours. This is fine.
The World Health Organization has, anything above 45 is considered uncomfortable. Not uncomfortable, but amusing, I guess.
30 is supposed to be inside your home.
So you had the dam, you were at 52.
Okay, I'm just telling you what we read. And we get a lot of input from various parties, so...
Also, a comment was made last week there by one of the members that natural sound is different than man-made sound.
Yeah.
Which is, to me, ludicrous. Elementary school, general science, sound is sound.
Well, after we put our first draft out, or the second draft, or second one, since then, the town has hired a sound engineer. The Concerned Citizens Group has hired a sound engineer. And Mike, you went to speak by sound engineer, right?
Well, he was a civil engineer.
Yeah. 35 seemed to fit at night, so we put it in there. But there again, we got a, we got 32-page law we're working on here. And you're talking about a little number we can change. I mean, we're...
I don't have to do your job.
All right, all right. I mean, but for us to get the bulk of the document up, the language in there, it's easy.
You got to, you got to looking at both sides of what you're hearing.
Right, that's right. And it's, I'll be telling you, it's above our expertise as...
Citing lawsuits...
I was just going to say, it is above my...
Excuse me, citing lawsuits that are five years old and still in litigation. Are there any lawsuits that are showing conviction? You know what I mean? Now you got something. But citing something 2012.
Bill Penny.
I don't know.
Go ahead, she's here.
Can I, do you mind if I answer to some of that?
You can give us a suggestion.
As Steve Ambrose did explain, natural sounds, especially natural sounds that are rhythmic, go with your body. Your body is able to naturally rhythmically go with those sounds. So a son of a waterfall isn't going to have the same effect as a man-made, unrhythmic sound. And that's part of what the issue is with the infrasound, as well as the audible sound that's causing, causing issues, is how it's not rhythmic. So your body can't get used to it. Like, a lot of times, you know, white noise, your body gets used to it, you drown it out. That's not the case with the turbines because it's not rhythmic. Your body can't go in. And Steve Ambrose spoke to that, as well as a lot of the other studies that we have given you. I know you've had a lot to read, and a lot to read through. But there is definitely a difference between the man-made and that's, or maybe just non-rhythmic opposed to a natural one. So therefore, the decibel level isn't there. Plus, that is talking about audible sound. And our main concern is the infrasound. It's directly related with, you know, you can use formulas to get from the DVA to the DBC and such. But, so that's why it's easier to talk about the DVA, the audible sound. But it's the infrasound, and that's different from things such as a natural waterfall. But I have a couple other questions. You just said that, when Gary spoke, well, that's kind of left out for the lawyers. And I understand that interpreting certain things are above all of our expertise. But please keep in mind that the lawyer that any wind developer, or any developer coming as big company as what Iberdola is, is going to be able to have a much more experienced, a much more higher-paid lawyer than either of our towns could afford or be able to get. So it's very, very important that things aren't left up in interpretation. That if you really want the town to have, have control, spell it out. Because if it's left, left up in interpretation, a very seasoned lawyer, such as what Iberdola has, is going to cut right through it if you leave anything up to interpretation. Even though, as us, you know, locally understand where we're coming at, there, there are lawyers' experience, he's going to cut through it. And the other, other question I have is, it, does it still say 500-foot height limit? And the reason why I'm asking this is, there are several places in the PSS that refer to a tower, to the megawatts, some of them being over 3.0. And from what I've looked at, the specs of different manufacturers, they're taller than 500 foot to have over the 3.0 megawatt generation per tower. And I don't know the page. It's in the first 90 pages of the PSS. I don't have the exact page with me. But there is at least one spot where Iberdola words it that they will use the most current equipment necessary, or what is available for currently, that the most, the most current technology, I think is how it's worded. And in other places in New York State, that means 600 plus. So if it's not spelled out...
He won't say, now they're going to be...
Shouldn't that be spelled out, the permit?
Excuse me, excuse me, please.
Sure, I'll answer that. Go on record, we are not going over 500 feet, period. There are different classes of permits, that is correct. But they all come with different blade sizes and different hub heights for towers. We will not be going over 500 feet. We've heard a lot of questions and statements about sound and safety. Just want to remind, on June 13th, we will have experts on both subjects. And they will, you know, what I ask of everybody here is to ask the tough questions. You're asking tough questions. We welcome that. We ask for the town boards, for the planning boards, to ask the same thing. Ask the tough questions. That's what they're here for. So June 13th, you can ask what you need. You'll understand, you can believe it, do what you want with the information.
Good, you don't ask us the tough questions.
Yeah, ask them. I'm a better fellow.
No, I'd rather ask my own independent. I would, I would like to say, though, you did say we hired a sound expert. Actually, that full hour-long presentation that Steve Ambrose did, he gave free of charge. So that's what I'm talking about. That's unbiased. You can't get any more unbiased than that. We didn't even pay the man. You know, the stuff that we're going to hear on June 13th is going to be bought and paid for.
Yep.
And it's a simple fact.
Okay.
Going along with the 2,500-foot setback, we'd like to request that those setbacks also be from non-participating property lines, including state land, which you said it would, and state and federal wetlands or bodies of water. Because there's some, there's some lubricating fluids and things in those turbines that if they got into a water body, could really be a problem. So we're hoping that we will include state and federal wetlands or bodies of water because lots of us are dependent on groundwater or surface water. Groundwater supply.
And it's like five times the power height, not...
Right, five times or, five times or 2,500 feet. Because what one Amish fellow said is, yeah, well, they're shorter. Because there are shorter turbines, I've seen one 100, 200 feet tall. And those would have to be 2,500 feet also. So we need, I think, both those, both those parameters in for setbacks. In addition, I think we just touched on it. In the definitions section of both Hopkinton and Pierceville wind law, it's currently states participating land is land where any agreement is signed with the developer. So that would include, that would include unrecorded agreements, Burton-Bath study, good neighbor agreements, if those come to the surface. And all those would qualify as participating land and would get around a 2,500-foot setback or five times the power height. So I think it's important that participating land would be land where the property owner has signed either for placement of an internal industrial wind turbine or the placement of transmission line. And that all other studies and agreements including good neighbor agreements not be taken into consideration as those be considered part of participating property. Just we want to make sure you understand that not all leases or agreements may have been recorded with the St. Lawrence County clerk's office yet. One of them is allegedly resigned in August, is still not up there. So there may be some surprise ones out there.
Okay, I think that's about it. I hope, there's 45 minutes in this, and I think we've got six people top. Oh, please.
I'd like to, I think maybe clarify something. I've heard a couple times where they're talking about sound as if the sound would need to be at the source. What we're talking about is at the residence or at the property line. We're not talking about at the windmill. I think most people would understand that. But like the waterfalls giving, what, 55 DVA? It's not 55 dB at the bulk field and at the school. It would be less if we get to the school. We're measuring at the school, not at the, not at the source. We're measuring at the property line or the residence, not at the windmill. I mean, I think I understood mostly, but I thought some people acted like they didn't understand that. And the other thing I'd like to say is, and maybe this is because I'm not very educated, but you know about the, when you get a mattress or a sofa or something that's stuffed, there's a little tag on there that says about, under the penalty of the law, you can't resell that unless it's inspected, and so on. Well, I've never seen a mattress fleece, did you? And the question I have is, with hardscrabble and now Gary Colry's, obviously, there was a law in place where there's fines or, we have it in our law, I think it's page 30, where it says how much of a fine per week that you get if you're in violation. And now, I would suppose if these other towns had that too. Why have these things been resolved in those places? Isn't this strong enough to make them want to come into compliance? Or what's the reason?
No, that's not enough money.
I mean, $350, I think, a week.
I don't know. I can't answer that.
Yeah, probably can't answer that. But somehow, the other, it needs to be strong enough that they want to go by your law. And the other thing I say is, at some point, you got to get this law done.
Yeah, that's what we want to keep working on tonight. Like to get the county involved as soon as possible. So we got some input from the county planning office. And they gave us some suggestions and, and we got something from Mr. Collins. Some are pretty easy, some are kind of complex. So what I did, I took them into what we're going to call draft number three. And we can go through that page by page, that, that... Got the comments dealt with. And if you don't like them, I'll take them out. If you like them, go ahead, just get the drafts through you out here and get going on. Okay? Okay, first one's on page four, definitions. In our, in our town land use and development code, we refer to this book, this particular book, for any definitions that weren't in our, definitions in our law. So I wrote that down and referred to that again. And that's in this pile. Should be enormous, I think I picked up here. Yeah. And here's what it will, "As used in this local law, all terms and phrases shall be defined in the publication, philosophy, zoning, development, and planning terms, edited by Michael Davison and Faith Delneck, published by American Planning Association. Planning Advisory Service reports numbers 491 slash 492 for this local law. Copies are available at Town clerk's office, the enforcement officer's office, the St. Lawrence County Planning Office Board's office, and the town attorney's office." And then we go back to our regular, "The following terms shall have the names indicated." And we went into our definitions. Now, in those definitions, Mr. Collins noted that we had sound pressure levels in air. And our sound pressure level was actually definitely statistical sound levels. So I added the term statistical sound pressure levels. Then I added what he, what he does, adds A-weighted sound pressure levels in our agreement, L.A. The sound pressure level measured in decimals, B capital B capital A, and equal to 20 times the logarithmic, the logarithm to the base 10 of the ratio of root mean square sound pressure to a reference sound pressure weighted by a frequency band following standard practice. The reference sound pressure in air is 2 times 10 to the minus fifth of passcode. And I guess that's an accepted definition for A-weighted sound level. And we just got a stack of stuff tonight, and I don't know where it came from, but I know who came from.
With James.
And they, they come on that also. But what I would like to do is we send this document that I got looped in my inexperience on to the attorneys and to Mr. Collins. And the other part is that we're going to have them go through it because it's, there's a lot there. And it's just going to, if we go through that word by word, it's going to take us two more minutes. All right, moving on to the next page. Was... Page 10, section 202, hell. Jason Fortenauer of the county planning office said that this was a little unclear because we're asking for them to fill in complete part one of the full environmental settlement form. And all this information is going to be submitted as part of their application. So we're asking that they submit all information required under Article 10, Section 164, S.G. So we'll be getting their full application, basically. Then, on the same page, number N, page 10, we had the word decibel... we had, the word decibels after noise and it shouldn't have been there because we were talking about noise data and that specific decibel. And then in number O, Jason Potenauer questioned the fact that we had seeker in there and the Public Service Commission sighting board includes the D E C. So in place of seeker, we should either have and/or in there. So I added, if a positive declaration of environmental significance is determined by the seeker, lead agency or the Public Service Commission sighting board. Technicality, but it's important to the county planning office. That's page ten. Mike, page.
I think it's called the.
What's that?
I think it's called the Department of Public Service.
The Public Service Commission sighting board, yeah. Okay.
What's that?
And then we have another thing on that, yes. Well, sound pressure levels. No, that's a page block, sorry. Okay, this is from Mr. Cohen. He said that we had, in our noise analysis, number four, we should have at the end of our sentence, we had, the noise analysis shall include low frequency noise. But he wanted us to get more specific. Low frequency noise that is discounted by the A weighted decibel scale. Now, I tried to read up on that. It looks like that includes what's called incursing decibel meters and stuff. Then, page. That's what I just added. Page twelve. This is the tough one. In order to cut back on the underterms, we refer to, and variously secure the fact that portions of the application can be given waivers. And we shouldn't ask for repetition of information that has already been provided. So I got this out of our, of our town code. When, in the opinion of the planning board, it may at its discretion modify the application requirements to the specific matter under consideration so that substantial justice may be done, that's the attorney's stuff. And the public interest secured, provided that such modifications will not have the effect of nullifying the intent and purpose of this law. The planning board may waive, subject to appropriate conditions, the provisions consistent with the public health, safety or general welfare or which are inappropriate, such as repetitive submission of the same information. In the event any requirements are waived, they shall be specifically listed as waived in any special permit, in any special permit use, site plan review or any planning board resolution approving or conditionally approving application requirements. And I haven't got a response from the attorneys on that yet, but I'm sure they'll, they'll get back to me. That's the big one. Page twelve. Page fifteen, section two oh four S. Mr. Cohen mentioned that we should mention the total height of the whack. And Mr. Potenauer said we had to add a sentence here. No whack shall make abnormal noises caused by mechanical malfunction or maintenance efficiency, whether or not said whack is within the five times of its total height of the whack. In other words, if a unit is more than five times away from a facility and is still malfunctioning, we don't, they, they have to. The way it was written before, if it wasn't within, if it was outside any area concerned, they have to. All right. Now, on two point oh seven, this is the big one. This is where we get all kinds of response, page seventeen. We do see all this stuff we got going on, looped tonight. What we're trying to do is get this, get it down. And it looks like a big mistake here was I had.
Exactly. I was trying to follow myself. It sounds like something out of, out of what it wraps around.
Page seventeen, right, Fred?
Yeah, I had a, I had a small B, I had a D, small B, A, and it's supposed to be a capital B, A. So it's a capital, a small D, capital B, capital A for all roads. And Mr. Cohen said that we should be more specific on where we measured a noise level near residents. And he said, if the ambient noise level measured at least, measured at ten feet from a nearest such a structure that exceeds the standard limit, the standard shall be three dB higher than the ambient noise level. So going back to ambient noise level, which everybody's concerned about, at a residence, it shouldn't be more than three dB higher than whatever the ambient was. If it exceeds, if the standard limit. On B, I had contiguous. It goes into definition of pure tone defined to exist at one-third octave band sound pressure level in the band, including the tone exceeds the rhythmic average of the sound pressure of at least two adjacent one-third octave bands. We had contiguous and it's supposed to be adjacent. And there again, in number C, he says we, the noise level shall be measured at least ten feet from next year, potentially affecting Zix's resident schools, hospitals, churches, all the libraries. And then, when we wanted to round down, round out, down, he wanted us to round up. So he said, any noise level falling between two whole decibels shall be rounded to the closest whole decibel value, rather than lower of the two.
But the ambient noise from the house or from the, the non-participating resident line?
This is, this is standards for the setbacks when they actually are measuring. There again, this is page seventeen, which, there's seventeen, there's seventeen. Where are we now? Seventeen? Okay, page eighteen. All right, in our noise compliance monitoring, we wanted us to add this phrase in two oh eight dash B dash four. A plan for regular and emergency maintenance, and here's what he said. Including instrument calibration, replacement or repair equipment compromising monitoring station. That, that's gotta be part of the long-term monitoring stations. Seventeen to eighteen. And then from there on, no comments from anybody. So the next twelve pages look like they're okay. Mike, you got anything?
Yeah, on section three oh two, page twenty-three, which is this. Application for wind measurement towers. Three oh two A five, the decommissioning plan.
Yes.
Somehow we should word that to go along with our, to be the same as our decommissioning plan in two eleven. I believe there's C, a section two eleven, subsection C. C and D. Which are. C is removal of the system shall include.
Yep.
And then B is restoration of each site.
Yep.
And they should be mentioned in there just so things are consistent, I feel at least. And whether it's a wind measurement tower or. What are you looking for?
This was the old one, I should say forty-eight, forty-nine, so.
Yep, okay. There's something.
See what I wrote.
Makes sense.
Okay, this is this all. The same specifications as on the decommissioning plan, section two point one one R C. Remove of the system.
Yeah.
Two point one one D, subsection restoration of the site. And also include the sturdy bond or ash wood. Okay, that's for the towers.
Yes, Jason's comments.
Hey, you guys get anything else to put around this thing?
Page seventeen, section two, he was talking. Two, two point oh seven, C. Says schools, hospital, churches, and places of worship.
Yeah. Is that still in there?
Yep, still in there. We talked about it before.
Yeah.
Section C.
Yeah, there's a couple of things I think you guys see, like, I know we changed that.
Yeah.
But I can't. She has trouble with emailing stuff back to me and me her. So she printed this off her computer, right, at home or here? At home, yeah. And I put it on a USB drive. The home and zap it. So I know that's, that's, that's been changed.
No more trouble.
Just, yep, thank you. I'll make sure that's on there. So, yeah, what I call draft three.
We did change it a while back.
All this stuff I read to you are on draft three, that, that, on my computer. And I bought a brand new little USB phone drive and I lost it.
Hate that part. It's probably where you left it.
Yeah, I bought in the war. I drive in my sister's car, I own it. Again, the seat of her car.
Yeah. Can't talk to sister.
Fred, I got a comment, I guess on Jason's.
Yeah.
Comments. And once again, back to the old hunting camp.
All right.
Where are you?
It's section one oh five, page four, definition of residence. You know, and I guess there's been a lot of talk back and forth. Because under typical planning definitions, a hunting camp is not a residence. But I think if we add, for the purposes of this law, a residence means to our definition, because I know there was some reference to our code. You know, if we just add in, although Roger did clear this.
Yeah.
But I think it would just make it clearer. And let me get back to it.
Okay, so the purpose law, residence for the purpose of this law.
Yeah. Somewhere in there. It's, it's not in there. I looked. That's why I wanted this book.
That's, that's why we kind of put it in there.
Yes, yes. That's why I wanted that book so bad. I wanted.
No, that's been, they came out with a new procedure.
Yeah.
I might have to change these. The county planning office, when they took them in, they verified that. And I think they changed it. Okay, now, I did get an email tonight. This is a hot one. From, I talked to county planning, our county planner today, John Penbusch. I also got an email from Jason Potenauer. And they're going to be reviewing, the county planning board is going to do a formal review of the Hopkinton wind law on Thursday. And if we can get a draft to them, they will look at ours too. That would speed things up. Now, we got a comment tonight from the concerned group. We all got some from Evangeline. And if you guys are okay with the stuff we did tonight, we can send our draft three. This stack we got from Luke and stuff we got from Scott McDonald. And ask for their input on it. I mean, they got, these guys get paid for this and they're a lot smarter than I am. And lawyers can do the same. But also, she had that question. I kind of like to send that over to Mr. Cohen and see if he can answer that individually.
I had another comment briefly. Could I?
Just a minute, before we do the comment. The other thing, I got a letter from Mr. Wuluski too. And he suggested that the more input we get, the more dialogue we get, the better. And the town should have a public hearing. And they do not have to wait for comments from the county planning board. We have a presentation in two weeks from two other sound experts. We have a presentation in two weeks from two other sound experts. If, if, I mean, how do you think the town feels if they have a public hearing?
My, my thought is, Fred, that we move ahead with the public hearing, um, working with draft three that you're about to put out. Um, as Jason pointed out today, as well, um, you know, amendments, changes, small changes in wording, uh, to the law, to be made relatively easily. Um, making sure that we have the law, the new law in place is very important. Um, so we need to go ahead and move forward.
Yeah, you know, the bulk of it's good. We just get that page seventeen, it's got all this, the sound stuff in there, setbacks. Um, yeah, one page out of thirty-two, that seems to be, well, can be true. So, need a motion to, uh, do that. Go ahead and-
I'll make the motion with some of it.
All right, Luke.
One second.
Okay, sure. Um, so what we'll do, make those changes we just talked about, I'll email it to the county planning office tomorrow, uh, the county attorney, Mr. Cohen, and, uh, I'll put it as a PDF, I'll send it to Van Graege, to the, that, the, the Citizens for a Brighter Future, and to the CCFRP, and put it on the town website. All right? Now, before we do, we got one more comment? Go ahead.
Um, you keep saying you're gonna-
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, we have a vote on it. Thank you, Mike. Okay.
Just technical.
Before we do-
You keep saying county planning board.
Yes.
There's two different things. There's the county planning board, which has citizens on it.
Yes.
Is that who's gonna review it?
It's a formal review by the county planning board.
And is that on June first, or is that on June eighth?
Uh, if I get it to them, they should, they should be able to go on June. That's probably me, too.
They assured us that if we got this to them for their review, um, they'll be looking at it up to date, and we'll have your discussion on the return of us. Hopefully that can stay.
It was just a, a wording detail on page twenty-one and twenty-three. There's a reference to obtaining a bond, securing a bond for decommissioning. Page twenty-one and page sixteen and twenty-three, I'd just like to comment that a bond is an insurance policy and requires a premium to be paid. Who will be paying the premium, and what is the oversight mechanism? Financially troubled companies usually don't pay their bills, so a bond wouldn't be a good idea. The best way to do it would be an escrow account in the town's name, and it's the only way to guarantee the funds will be there when you need them.
An escrow account?
As opposed to securing a bond, because someone's gotta pay the insurance premium. It's, it's on page sixteen, twenty-one, and page twenty-three, there's references to bonds. An escrow account in the town's name with the cash there at your disposal. We did mention it in Hopkins ten, and we thought you were going to mirror, mirror what-
I haven't sent us the draft in the last session. I, I haven't been able to look at theirs, but, thank you.
And they may, they may not have put the update in theirs either, I'm not sure. But we did mention it to them also.
Yeah, I'm gonna, when I, I'm gonna send these separate questions to, to Roger, then you can disperse to different people. That's, uh-
That's a good one for him.
Okay. Okay, no more comments? Take the motion to adjourn. Oh, yeah, we, yeah, we already started the whole, gee.
Are we sure it all moved?
That's because I didn't have the finger. Yeah.
I make a motion.
I give it to you, but you give, I can't.
Oh, I'll suck it up. Table winner?
All favor?
Yeah, I was really excited to get into this, like, this county planning office. Yeah, I can get this county planning office, and get some people out there. Okay.
Don't, don't make the motion to adjourn.
One second.
All favor?
Hi.
All right. I'll help you.
Thank you.
Thank you.